Morning, everybody.
Morning.
It's April 23rd, 2024, regular meeting Liberty County Commissioners Court. The record show that Commissioner Whitmire is here, Commissioner Arthur, Commissioner Karbowski, Commissioner Wilson is with us by way of Zoom this morning. Morning, Leon.
Morning, morning.
That's, I like your cap there. That's pretty. You don't get all of us one of those?
Uh-huh.
You gonna get all of us one of those caps like that? And I could sure use one this summer.
Okay. I got a connection. We'll see if we can't get you one.
Okay, sir. All right, there you go.
Yeah, yeah. Got just a second?
Huh?
Does the court have just a second?
Yes.
I'm, uh, had an in-depth scheduled appointment with my oncologist Friday. And I'm proud to say at this point in time that my cancer is stable. My cancer cells and my blood have dropped dramatically. And I just want to share that with everybody, let them know how things are going.
Hallelujah. Amen. Thank you. I'll say one thing, you gotta be one of the toughest people I know.
It's been a rough road. It's still going.
We'll keep praying for you.
That's right, we will. Well, I feel better already. Yeah. All righty, we did have this for the court this morning. They don't have a real lengthy agenda, but we will get started. So since we are called orderly, if you'd leave us in the pledges and Matthews, if you'd leave us in the impetus.
Please face the American flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please face the Texas flag.
I will face the Texas flag by the flag of the United States of America. Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Y'all, value that as a prayer to me. Father God, we come people, we thank you so much for this beautiful Tuesday morning. Your grace and the hope that only you can provide us is on full display outside. And we thank you for those, those treasured moments. Father God, we ask for judgment, discernment, wisdom upon all those who are gathered here so that they can discern the public good and everything. May everything be done for the public good. And Father God, we thank you for all your many blessings and in your holy name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Matthew.
Notes and proclamations, Dee Dee, I don't think we have any this morning. Okay, public comment. Lee, you got something you want to talk about on the election business?
Just real, start with my voice. Just real quick, voting started yesterday, early voting for city and school elections. The election day is May 4th. Early voting goes from the 22nd through the 30th. We're open on the weekends as well. This is vote center, so you can vote anywhere in the county. However, you have to be a member or you have to be a resident of the entity that's having the election. So if you live in Harden, I'm so sorry, you're just kind of out of luck because they don't have any elections this go around. But Cleveland does, Dayton does, Tarkenton does, Liberty does, Ames does, Devers does, Dezetta does, and the whole freshwater school supply district does. So there's several entities, there's 11 in total having elections right now. So please go out and vote. Actual locations, Jack Cartel, Cleveland Civic Center, Harden City Hall, Dayton's Community Center. And we have a new one this time. We are voting at the Cleveland I N D old board building, which they now call their annex building. And that's in the precinct three area. So that's our new location that we're trying out. We're trying to find a good permanent spot in Commissioner Whitmire's area. So those are the five early locations. They all have curb sign. And of course, today is the last day to get your mailing ballot in. So if you want to vote by mail, you got to make sure you get the application into us today. And I think that's it. The election is on Saturday, May 4th. Mostly school board, city council, Tarkenton bond issues on there. So lots to vote for. Don't forget.
Do your homework. Yeah.
And everything's on our website. So just go to the Liberty County Elections webpage. It's all there, times, locations, sample ballots, all of it. So.
Good deal. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All righty. Declare conflicts of interest. If anybody has any conflicts this morning. Hearing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Dwayne, we have any add-ons there?
I've got one budget amendment for donations. $2,000 donation to constable fire for education training. So we're experiencing education training of $2,000, another income of $2,000.
All right, thanks. Any other items to consider?
Yeah, I'd like to address item six, the last item off here for clarification. I'm not quite understanding the promotion to corporal in the, for the constables. Is there even a position there? We create one. What is the?
Well, is, my question would be, is it a name only and not monetary value?
Right now.
Chair?
That's the way it's been on the constable's offices. They, on the payroll, and this terrorist probably clear that it's deputy constable, but they've given titles as captain, sergeant, and it's no increase in pay. It's just entitled only.
You could listen like this and know.
That's the way I understand it.
Now, I think really they believe I think.
We don't.
The title, well, no, that's true. That is true. Well, we don't have.
Or go ahead.
But we don't have to approve if it's a name only. And this is that, I think they've got somebody to pay the salary, the increase in salary. But you're committing the county for long range obligation for one year commitment.
I think actually y'all do have to. I mean, they can call them whenever they want to on their side. As far as the position, but I think Commissioners Court has got.
That is correct.
They may, I mean.
Yeah, it is one.
Yeah, it says, maybe what?
I'm not going to make a motion if we approve the consent agenda when jurisdiction and eliminate that spot. Then we'll have to consider that for some other time.
I have some add-ons. I have some add-ons.
I was getting to you.
Well, I'm going to make a note that consent agenda, item six, promotion corporal is being tabled to a future meeting.
Okay, that's a motion.
Well, yeah.
Ian, what you got?
I have some payroll items. One is for the jail to pay off the unused comp time for Officer Kirsten. They paid $42.72.
What's the last name?
David.
And then Officer Miranda Garcia with the jail unused comp time taken off of $688.38. Officer Delala Spaby with the jail unused comp time, $270.61. Officer Brady Wilkerson, unused comp time, $199.39. Sergeant Miss Lynn with the jail unused comp time, $251.61. That's it.
The first one I would like to, very kind motion to approve.
Additions as well. Okay. Lee, you got that?
Yeah, I didn't hear the numbers, but Kim will have to send to me.
Motion Greg second from Bruce to approve the consent agenda with the additions and with one portion to table. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise nays. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Moving on, regular agenda. Number one, from Ms. Salday, over in permits and inspections, considering approved, signing the authorizations to proceed on the demolition contracts using the C B D G grant. I'll get it right in a minute. It's actual recovery from the general land office. And what we're doing on these, yeah, I have the authority to sign these contracts. But we're going to bring them before the court every time because we want full transparency here. That's why it's added on to the agenda. Okay?
And this is the last step in the tent that you brought. And they're anxious to get started. They're ready to rock. So all we need is your approval to send them now for the.
Drag out the wrecking ball or the tractor. Which will it be? Okay.
Making motion to approve.
Motion Bruce second from Leon to approve further discussion. Hearing none, call for vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise nays. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, Linda. Also, next with the permits and inspections, considering approved invoice number 202-403-883 dated 3/8/24. Amount of $29,595 for hardened wastewater stream services from LJA Engineering using ARPA funds. Mary Johnson has signed the invoices. Let's put yourself explanatory. Linda, you have anything to add to that?
Yeah. It says Harden on here, but it's actually Hull on my backup. It says on the agenda, but it's actually my backup attorney. It's for the Hull freshwater.
Mary Johnson is in part.
So, all right.
Two different things, really.
It's the Hull's freshwater project. It's signed by Marvin from the jail. I'll resubmit it if you want me to.
Yeah, let's, let's table that.
I'll table it and I will resubmit.
Making motion to table.
Table from Bruce, motion from Bruce, second from Leon. Further discussion? I wouldn't think we could have any further discussion on that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise nays. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number three, from our fire marshal's office, Bill. Let's talk about considering approved, the order authorized sales of fireworks for the Memorial Day holiday. Also, by the way, my anniversary.
No sticks and fins.
No sticks and fins. Is that it? Okay. It's going to be starting May 22nd and then ending at midnight, May 27th.
Yeah, going for five days.
I'll celebrate my anniversary five days.
There you go.
No sticks and fins.
Making motion to approve excluding sticks and fins.
Motion from Bruce and second from David to approve the fireworks, sale of fireworks, but no sticks and fins. We call that the Jim Wilson rule. Further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise nays. Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number four, from Mr. Brown.
Yes, sir.
There you are, brother. Rick, how you this morning?
Right.
Ash shows up and they hadn't started doing anything right yet. We won't even talk about them then.
It's a long season. It's getting shorter every day.
It is. Considering approved the annual strike of taxes due to the statute of limitations.
Yes, sir. This is a process that actually we started, I guess, under my reign a few years ago because I could see if we weren't doing this on a consistent basis. The tax code requires that if you don't have a lawsuit holding over collections for personal property, you can only keep 10 years of unpaid taxes. And for real property, you can only keep 20 years of unpaid taxes. So basically every 20 years, you drop the lower on real property. So this year, 2023, we're going to drop the 2003 and we're going to add the 23. So you keep a 20-year on real property, the same thing with real property. So it's not something that requires approval, but it's something that I always felt like, you know, like we send out to all the attorneys. We send it to all the entities. And I like to present it to the Commissioners Court for their knowledge. And you can act on it, but it's not required by statute for y'all to approve it.
Appreciate you doing that. Let's probably know what we're.
It is basically taking, in effect, 5,833 accounts. But this year, the strike off amounted collectively is 94,727,852. So that number has gone down a lot just so many years to hedge up on it. But now we're basically keeping that 20-year window on real property and 10-year on personal property. So it's not like you, you know, you're losing, and typically, as long as it's still accruing taxes, like if they got billed for 2023, that means there's property taxes still being assessed. But we can't go, we have to drop off 2,002, you know? So you keep that 20-year window.
Right.
And we've designated every April to do that. We wait till collections come through, you know, the new taxes come in. And then we do it. It's, I don't think the code specifies when you need to do it, but we're trying to do it every April. And so that's why we presented this, this time. Dayton ISD likes to bring theirs before their board. I think they're the only entity other than us that actually presents it. Because when we took over their contract, they were concerned that you as a Commissioners Board would be deciding if their taxes get struck off and waived and all that stuff. It's really not part of it, but they like to carry it out. So we, they're going to put a little agenda, I think. They have already done it this week where they approved the strike off. So we get no, we typically don't get any inquiries from any of the other entities. We serve notice to the attorneys. It's a, it's a long detailed list of every account. So I'm entertaining questions or any comments about it, but.
Okay. Y'all have any questions?
No, we don't need to approve this. We just.
No, we, let's do that for transparent purposes, yes.
That you do approve it, that's.
I'm going to hear for second.
Motion from Greg and second from Bruce to approve further discussion. Hearing none, call for vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Likewise nays. Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, Rick. You're not done yet. We got one more.
Got one more.
Yes, sir. Number five, consider and approve a proposed contract for a PIT. Now, let's talk about a PIT, Public Improvement District.
And if you remember, I think it was last October, we presented to Commissioners Board to consider. We've been approached by West Point Development, City of Dayton, for us to collect their PIT assessment and consolidate it on the tax statement. And at the time, I presented to two Commissioners Court and basically y'all said, yeah, we're in favor of doing it. I asked to have some time to develop it because we can't just take our normal collection contract like we have with Dayton ISD or City of Dayton because it's got a few moving parts that don't apply or be so many not applicable. I thought it'd be best if we developed one strictly for PIT. So we met with the developer who's representing the City of Dayton, not the developer, the third party who's actually facilitating the collection. They wanted us to do it last year in August, but we said, no, we don't have time to get it set up. So they actually, City of Dayton actually built it out. And so they've had a year with it. But it's a whole different type of collection. It's an assessment of a certain amount. It's not based on your valuation. It's a set amount. When you buy a lot, you're assessed
Yep.
25 or 30,000, whatever it is, and you have 30 years to pay it off with interest, or you can pay it off right away. What they want us to do is to collect that annual assessment each year, put it on our statement and send it out.
Matthew?
Yes, we're still a long ways from that. You still have plenty of time to make the arrangements.
Well, in my, to get it ready for collection, but the administrator would like for us to get it done in 30 days, you know? Yeah, get the contract done and all that stuff. So that's what we were trying to do next week. So we've already got copies from Missouri County. It's very, you know, Spindel Media does their stuff. So we're, we're trying to get some numbers from them. It's basically just like when we did Dayton ISD. We haven't gone any of the development costs to the entity. Plus then we discharge our 32 cents, just like we do, you know, for all our entities. That's our current rate. So we're trying to develop that now. Try to figure a reporting, just kind of getting it on the agenda to start, you know, getting it developed. I'm going to work with Matthew and Catherine on it. Take, you know, not, there's no reason to invent a new wheel on it. Just take what somebody else has. And Missouri County uses the same software and similar deals. It's a good to adopt. So we're kind of taking pieces from that. So hopefully in the next couple of weeks, my goal is to be back with the actual contract that we can present for approval.
Yeah.
For the next 30 days.
The other side of a PIT, Public Improvement District, is it does have a shelf life.
Yes.
In this case.
30 years.
30 years.
30 years, or they can pay it off day one.
Yeah, that's the election of the property owner. Yeah.
The only thing I was a little concerned was, if you even considered it, was the questions we may get from the taxpayer because this is something, you know, kind of a new, you know, new event. It's going to be on our statement. But I've been told that they get full disclosure. They sign off 20 documents. They understand it. But again, it's still matters. A lot of times people don't read it. They see it on their statements.
Yeah.
And then they have.
Well, that's my biggest concern is the rest of the public doesn't understand what these acronyms are.
Right.
And in this case, a PIT is a tool in the toolbox for development.
Right.
Yeah.
And in this particular case, the PIT is being used to pay back the developer, I think, some of the infrastructure costs of Dayton. So it's kind of a PIT-Ters connection. Again, City of Dayton, Liberty County is not participating in any part of it. The only thing we're connected with is actually collecting it, just like we do for the schools and cities in the county. It's just a, it's just a service function.
That particular development, did they consider self annexation?
I'm not privy to that.
I'm not either. I'm just curious.
My understanding is the City of Dayton was going to, you know, they were outside their ETJ, but they brought them in. Or they were outside their city limits and they brought them in, but I.
This, this development out on 1960 was talking about?
Yeah.
They're, they're, they're going to, if they haven't already done it, they've already, they're planning on self annexation.
Okay.
Okay.
And I believe, I believe those steps have already taken place.
Again, that, that doesn't affect us collecting, I don't think.
No.
It's, you know, and then my understanding is it's another. So we really need, even though it's not, it may not just be one and done because I think there's other PIDs that probably are going to request that we collect. So it's good to come up with a generic contract that we can block in and utilize going forward. But it's my understanding, and again, the court, we didn't take any official action because we didn't, y'all didn't approve the contract. I just asked for y'all to give me time with all of it. What's getting that time? So hopefully in the next 30 days, we'll have a contract back for y'all to look at, signs. And then we give the developer, the City of Dayton, I think you say developer, but it's, it's, this is actually with the City of Dayton.
Yeah. I appreciate you being proactive in this regard. Yeah.
I think it's, again, it's, it's been done in a lot of counties, pretty common stuff. But just case in point, we had a person, we had a person call us today who had an account at River Ranch. And he was calling us and, what's this mud tax on Dayton? So again, you know, we don't, we don't collect that. But again, people, when they see something different, and it wasn't on their tax bill, they'd be just getting a separate bill.
Yes.
But it's similar. And we just had to refer them back to, you know, to their, whoever their realtor or their developer or whatever. Because it is something different and it's a pretty sizable amount.
Yeah, it is.
I think this one in particular is 25,000 on one size lot and 30 something thousand on another. So that's just added to the cost of the lot.
Well, the other side of it is, the mud never goes away.
No.
Nope. But a PIT does go.
This does have a life and it is only being paid by the people who are benefiting from it.
Correct.
So.
Okay. All right, thank you. Appreciate it.
We'll be getting back with you once we have the contract.
Yes, sir. All right. What's court's pleasure in this regard? Consider approved a proposed contract for the PIT.
Making motion to approve. No action as of this point.
So we have the contract.
We had a contract. All right, this.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, let me get back on this one. Let's see.
Take no action.
Take no action. Take no action, Bruce?
Yeah, take no action.
Second?
Second.
Unanimous. David, I'm going to give you that one, okay? All right, thank you. Got a motion Bruce second from David, take no action. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Likewise nays. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number six, I get this from considering approved newly elected Liberty County Child Welfare Board members as follows. Nikki Taylor, Kim McIntosh, and Josh Fitzgerald. Y'all are here today, right? Cindy, come on up and introduce everybody to us. Y'all don't mind walking up here, do you? Yeah.
Well, today we have three new members. These people, they understand that they're volunteers with no pay.
Y'all come on around, somebody can see you good. All right.
We have Kim McIntosh and Nikki Taylor and Joshua Fitzgerald. And they're all citizens of Liberty County. And we have Devers represented, Liberty and Harden. Harden. So we try to reach out to different areas of our county for representation. So we welcome them and we're happy to have them.
Great. Thank y'all so much for stepping up and volunteering.
Absolutely.
We do appreciate it and especially the, the service y'all, y'all provide. I mean, think about it. It gets more and more necessary, unfortunately.
The good thing is right now is legislature has made some changes to what they have the definition of abuse and neglect. I don't know how the definition changes, but legislature has changed it. And at this current town, there's approximately 35 children in foster care in Liberty County, which is, I don't know if it's a good thing or a bad thing, but at one point there was 195. But they're doing more efforts to work with families, find relatives, and not put them into the foster care system.
Yes, ma'am.
So.
Well, thank y'all so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All righty. And good meeting y'all. You can put a name with a face. Motion from Greg to approve, second from Bruce. Further discussion? Better not be. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise nays.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank y'all. Thank y'all so much. Number seven, from Mr. God over in the county auditor's office, considering approved engagement letter with Mays and Associates for the fiscal year ending 9/30/23 financial statements and single audit services. Dwayne, you got anything you want to add to it? That's pretty explanatory. Just need somebody to get in there and crunch the numbers and prove that you're always right.
Making motion to approve.
Thank you.
Motion from David, second from Leon. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise nays. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number eight, consider and approve development agreement between Liberty County, Texas and Ellison Development LLC regarding the Public Improvement District, here's that PIT. Okay. Created by the Liberty County Commissioners Court on April 9th, 2024 as it relates to Project Gemini located in Precinct 3 of Liberty County, Texas. Matthew, this is, this is from your department over in the county attorney's office. So is there anything that you want to add to it?
If Catherine can handle this, I'll take it. Yes, so I want to start by saying this is different than what the ground was just talking about. This is, we're at the very beginning of this, this process last quarter. If you recall, y'all voted to approve the creation of this PIT in Precinct 3. It is a development agreement that kind of outlines where we go from here and what the developments and the developers' roles and goals are over the course of development of these homes. Again, it's about 550 homes, curb and gutter. And over the course of the 21 years, which is when we will be held on the commitment to collect with this PIT fee. Now, like they said last Commissioners Court, this will be assessed as PIT, the speed. I almost equated to like a homeowner's essential income fee. It will help in the outdoor improvements in, in the development itself. It will only apply to homeowners in that development. It's going to tap across taxpayers and everybody. It's only for those people who buy homes in that development.
Right. Wasn't there questions at that last meeting of our mercy service?
Yes, absolutely.
And how have we addressed that?
We have. Yesterday, the developers, myself, met with the fire marshal, he's here, and the judge. And we were able to. We have. Uh, yesterday, uh, the developers, myself, met with, uh, the fire marshal, he's here, and the judge, and we were able to come to an agreement as far as what, uh, a homeowner would contribute over the course of, of their, um, their payments, either they pay it off in print, uh, you know, at the beginning or over that twenty-one year period. And what was uh, decided upon was essentially eight dollars a month. Uh, which roughly comes out to about fifty-two thousand dollars annually.
Now we go directly to.
Yes, a fire EMS service. Now, the contract that I provided you is just a development agreement. It is just a plan. We are still waiting, uh, because we just had that meeting yesterday, we're still waiting on an addendum, uh, to address that eight-dollar fee that's gonna be absorbed by the P I D, um, to add to this agreement. Uh, so I would ask that this agreement we approved, um, with caveat that we include that addendum, uh, for our fire and EMS services. Um, I've gone over this in very detail, um, to the group name books. But again, since we're just the beginning, we will have to come back. You guys, we will have to have more public hearings, more public notices, um, before we even get to the point where Ricky's office will collect a P I D.
So the addendum will be brought back up for court?
I would ask that you per, you approve this, um, with the caveat that the addendum for our services and EMS services be, be attached.
So there's your motion.
Yeah.
Okay. Any questions?
And then. We approve.
Make pardon Leon?
Make a motion, we approve.
Thank you. Motion from Leon to approve. Second from Greg. Any further discussion? And we did have a good meeting on this yesterday, by the way. It, uh, you are in essence setting a precedent, you know, with future development business. You know, and I will, I will throw this out there. In the occasion with, say, Collie Ridge with their M M D, you know, they do put money forth for fire services. They just paid for a brand-new uh, fire station, you know, which I'm not sure what the cost was, Dave. You know, it was a couple million bucks probably.
Absolutely, yeah.
But, uh, that's what we're gonna end up having to work towards with future developers. Simply because it's expensive. Fire service, uh, EMS service is expensive. And especially when you have it in a particular location, you know, that, uh, I like to give the example that here's a cow pasture, okay? Here's the fence around the cow pasture, and these cows that live in this pasture have better grass, so therefore they pay more money to have better grass. That's it in a nutshell. That's what this does. And it's over a twenty-one-year period?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
And that will, the entire fee, um, it's by understanding will be assessed at the onset in the principal, and each owner can either pay it off at the onset, or they can pay it out, uh, you know, with interest over the twenty-one-year period.
Right. All right. So we have a motion from Leon, second Greg to approve. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Likewise nays. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, Catherine. Thank you, Catherine. Appreciate it. Number nine is also from the county attorney's office. Consider and approve agreement between commissioner and employee for payment of tuition for commercial driver's license training program.
So this is not in a specific agreement with an employee. This is just the form of the agreement. Uh, I'm bringing it forward, you know, it's, uh, as I understand, it's pretty difficult to get C D L drivers, uh, hired in the county. This should be a tool to help solve that. Uh, whenever, uh, an employee, uh, signs the agreement, they're buying themselves to go through a C D L training program and pass things in. Uh, in exchange, we'll pay for, uh, the tuition in that program. If they leave the county's employment, uh, before a year, they owe us. Uh, and.
Pretty fair.
Aren't they not?
Yeah. That's fair.
To approve.
Yeah, a motion from David, second from Bruce to approve. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Likewise nays. That motion does carry. Thank you, gentlemen.
I'd like to also, I'd like to also add to that, uh, speaking with a company right now that way give a a discount to Liberty County if we have a group of employees come together and, uh, take the schooling at the same time. But we're waiting to, we're waiting to see what, what happens out of that.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that's, I'd be very interested in that, Leon.
Yeah. Thank you.
The thing, the thing I've found, and I would imagine the rest of y'all have, is that it is so hard for us to attract old and hire, uh, commercial drivers. Uh, it's easy for them to drive fifteen, twenty minutes away and make almost twice as much money as they do, but we can pay them.
Yeah.
And, uh, but I believe, uh, I believe this may come to pass. We'll, we'll, we're, we're talking about it. We'll see what happens hopefully in the near future.
Okay. Good deal. Uh, number ten, Mr. Mr. C, good morning.
Hey.
But, uh, I trust that she made it through Aggie muster, okay?
Yeah, I think it's good this year with family's medical problems, but.
We had a good one here in Liberty. Yeah, yeah. Had probably fifty, fifty-five people show up. Yeah, that's great. Uh, this is consider approve payment to M and S Barnett Construction, the amount of eighty-eight thousand, seven hundred dollars for the fire sprinkler system at the Hartel Supply Building using ARPA funds.
Okay, my understanding is, I was, I was over there when the city had the inspection last Wednesday, I think, but I had to leave before they finished. But my understanding is they passed it, and everything's good.
Yeah.
This would be the final payment, the change orders.
Okay.
Uh, to M and S Barnett.
All right.
Make a motion to approve.
So some Bruce second from David to approve. Further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Likewise nays. That motion carries. Thank you, Harold. Don't sit down. I got a bunch more for you here, brother. Okay. Number eleven, consider and approve recommendation to award bid number twenty-four dash oh-six. Room addition and acceptance of payment terms for county firing range. Okay?
Okay, this is something that, uh, I think Mr. Whitmire, Bryce Wheeler have been working on for a while. Uh, we had some quotes. They were real close, but they were so close to fifty thousand, we decided we better get it out. And those quotes were based on verbal specifications. So here we have plans drawn, specification written. Uh, and it ended up being quite a bit, like about seventeen thousand dollars more than the lowest quote was.
Yeah.
They would do it this way.
They would do it this way.
Much change order. Uh, but the lowest was, uh, Myron McDowell at sixty-six thousand, eight forty-five.
Fifty, fifty-six?
Sixty-six.
Sixty-six.
Yeah.
And they were all, we had three of them. They were all Texas awnings and, uh, Barnett Construction. They were all real close. Only five hundred and seventy-seven dollars in one and two.
Wow.
So it's a good, good, quite good specs, I think.
Yeah.
And this funding's coming from where?
We, we put money in the budget, uh, which, it's a little bit, it's about fifteen thousand more, probably than what we budgeted.
You got something rad over cover, something?
Motion to approve.
And the bid that she recommended?
Yeah. Got a motion from David to approve.
David, you gotta tell me which one you're approving. Mr. McDowell?
Low bid. Oh, well, yeah, the, the one that had the bid, the lowest bid, I'm assuming.
Okay.
Got Mr. McDowell.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yeah, motion from David to approve, um, McDowell Construction. Need a second?
Right.
Greg got it? Okay. Got a second from Greg. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Likewise nays. That motion does pass. Thanks, gentlemen. Uh, number twelve from Harold. Consider approve purchase of two vehicles from Parkway Chevrolet, Parkway Chevrolet. Incorporated amount of ninety-nine thousand, thirty-two dollars, sixteen cents through the Sheriff's Association of Texas Contract Number twenty-two oh-three one zero zero eight R R, and upfitting in the amount of twenty-two thousand, seventy-nine dollars and thirty cents through the buy board contract six nine eight two three and seventy-four two three for the sheriff's department. Pretty self-explanatory.
Make a motion to approve. Take it.
Motion from Bruce, second from Greg to approve. Further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Likewise nays. That motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Mr. C, you got one more. Consider and approve renewal or termination of contract with firm foundations. Current contract will end August thirty-first. You have plenty of time to either discuss it or what?
The effective date of the original contract is September one, uh, twenty twenty-one, three-year contract. So it'd be on August thirty-first. Uh, if you don't do anything, it's an automatic three-year extension. Uh, the term date, it says a hundred and twenty days prior to the expiration date.
And we already a hundred and twenty days.
It's up here from May to August thirty-first is, uh, a hundred and twenty-three days.
Yeah, okay.
So we're right ahead of it.
Make a motion to approve.
We do pretty well terminate. You terminate.
Make the motion. Did he advise, make the motion to terminate?
Yes.
Okay. Harold?
Yeah.
I'm wondering, should we consider this at this point in time, or should we maybe possibly go back out for some additional quotes and bids?
Well, you gotta terminate this if you wanted help, and I think we can do that. We can go out for bids. If you don't do anything by May first or May third, I think it is, then it would automatically extend for three years.
I'll second the motion at this point.
Got a motion to terminate from Bruce, second from Greg. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Likewise nays.
Aye.
Okay, that is three. Uh, one nay. That's from Leon. That motion does pass to terminate the contract. Ending August thirty-first. Okay. All right.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion from Bruce to adjourn, all in favor, second from David. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.